Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Start with the moment of silence, then followed by the pledge led by Ms. Jackson, if you will.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Staff, if you will, please call the row.
Frederick McCoy?
Here.
Eric Canuti?
Here.
Ms. Shepherd?
Here.
Gillis Wigan?
Here.
Brennae James?
Here.
Marie Davis?
Present.
Brian Colton?
Here.
Kimberly Jackson? Arthur Hamilton? For Miss President.
Thank you, Mr. Glasswells. Additions and deletions?
Good afternoon, Jeff Gaggen, Planning and Administration Administrator. There are no deletions, additional or deletions to be amended.
Thank you, Jeff. Approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
If you will, I guess just a point of clarity for last month's... Can you guys hear me? For last month's minutes, I think it was overlooked that Ms. Jackson was in fact here. So, if you will, if one of my colleagues want to make a motion to amend with that inclusive to reflect.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes as presented with the correction that Ms. Jackson was present.
Properly moved by Ms. Davis, seconded by Ms. James.
Role call.
Frederick McCoy?
Yes.
Eric Canuti?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Gillis Wigan?
Yep.
Brennae James?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Brian Colton? Any more spoiling minutes of business?
Thank you. There's no unfinished business. Going down to item number six, new business, I actually want to make a switch here. We had something to come up with Section 8. We're awaiting one of our presenters, so we're going to move to Section B first. The site plan from Mr... The site plan.
Good afternoon, Jeff Gaggen, Planning and Administration. Under new business, Row 106, Item B, we have a site plan application from Mr. Shager Shumadovic. He constructs a 17,161 square foot pentacle in the general office building on two parcels, building 1.93 acres, located at the southeast corner of West Blue Heron Boulevard and Australian Avenue, and southwest corner of West Blue Heron Boulevard and Avenue L. This is a location map of the two parcels. Again, it's on the south side of Blue Heron Boulevard. This is a Google Earth view, and I will add the parcel here. I'll do it one more time. You see the parcel, the colored in green, so again, you can see the orientation of the two parcels. Here's a view standing at the intersection of Australian and Blue Heron Boulevard, looking southeast across the two parcels. And from the opposite direction, standing in Avenue L, looking towards the intersection that we were just viewing that image from. So you can see the two vacant parcels currently, green space, and we're looking to develop those parcels. This is the post-site plan. It shows the office and medical office component in the bottom right-hand corner of the two parcels with Mark along Blue Heron Boulevard. There's also a buffer along Blue Heron Boulevard, the green space and landscape there. And this is a color rendering of the new buildout. This is looking from the intersection, the intersection of Avenue L and Blue Heron Boulevard. Also tonight, we do have Mr. Roy Nass that we need to represent an applicant. I guess he lives out of voice call, but he gets here to answer questions. Staff does recommend approval of the site plan application. To Mr. Roy Nass.
Yeah, we're doing it. Roy Nass, NASSA, who was responsible for the design of Avenue L and Shaggy's. Our check is. Does anybody have any? Any questions?
Board?
I have a question. What percentage is green space?
We need the call for the green space. Uh, give me one second. Forty-three point seven percent. Impervious. Impervious percent. The landscape area is 32.2 percent.
That's not any hardscape, right? It's just landscape. It's just landscape, not even the hardscape.
Right, it's, they were, it's landscaping, what we saw, and greens and any areas.
And what's the requirement for green space?
The pervious and pervious ratios for redevelopment is actually directed by a comprehensive plan and for commercial development, the maximum, the pervious ratio is 70 percent.
What does that mean, pervious ratio?
Pervious would cover any sort of building footprint or a paved area sidewalk, so as long as you have more than 30 percent green space, landscape area, that meets the intent of comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson, are these microphones on? Because I'm having difficulties hearing. Ms. Jackson?
What type of retail space do you envision to occupy?
Right now, when we're looking at any retail at the moment, it's going to be medical and office-related, either to medical or office, general office. If there would be any retail, it might be something like a donor, donors or something like that, possibly.
Okay, plus on the, um, the design area.
That was the original rendering, where it was in the retail, but it's switched to medical and, and office. And retail would be, if there is a retail, it would be a subsidiary to a medical center. So it would be like breakfast, lunch, possibly, if, if at all.
Okay, thank you.
Chair. Give me one second, Mr. Colton. Ms. Davis?
Are the rules the same for medical buildings as they are for retail and office space?
The land development regulations, for the most part, are the same. There are different part requirements, so depending on if the developer shows to drastically alter what use is going to occur at that site, staff would have to reevaluate the existing parking to make sure that there's enough parking spaces for that demand, but currently we don't foresee any issues with that at this time.
Well, his plan, even though he said it's changed from retail to medical, is that what you said? Is that what you said, or?
No, not the plan, the rendering. I think the rendering's a retail office on it.
So does the application, retail office on it.
I'm sorry.
So does the application. On the land use, it says the same thing.
What, what happened over time was, this was actually an old application. It was originally submitted, I believe, three years ago.
2013, 2010.
Yeah, it kind of set dormant for some time due to the economy. Over the span of that time, there was, I guess, revision by the applicant, and they wanted to gear it now towards medical office and office use versus a retail component. So if there was any inconsistencies on the original application, the site plan itself does refer to it as a medical and office center. Additionally, the staff report and the approval that the request from the board would also state that is a fact.
So when someone applies for a building, a permit like this, is there, is there a time limit on it? Is it just there forever until they exercise it?
Yeah, there is a time limit. I'll say that we did offer a lot of flexibility over the past couple of years just due to the economy. We did want to encourage any sort of site plan application that we did already receive or being active, so whether that meant meeting with the applicant, making sure that they were still actually working on the site, sort of looking for future prospective tenants, just to make sure it wasn't completely dormant. But on the same note, we didn't want to disqualify or reject any applications and have them repay a fee associated with it. So we're trying to be, I guess, friendly to businesses and fully developing the response for the asking.
Thank you.
Just before, Mr. Colton, staff, can you put that visual back up? Go ahead, Mr. Colton, you're right last... No, the actual, over the, yeah, site plan. Go ahead, Mr. Colton.
In reference to the site plan, it shows one way in and one way out, but on the Australian side, your, your parking area is connected to an existing parking entrance of the businesses that are along Australian. Are there plans to open up that and connect both of them, or is there a reason for that going?
We have a cross-axis agreement in the works, and a letter from the property unit to the staff, they agreed on it, we're just waiting approval to execute the cross-axis agreement.
My follow-up question to that, as a medical center, that's possibly in that maybe for staff via active car entering and exiting off Australian, would there need to be a turn lane to go into that medical, if you're turning in from Australian side? Would there need to be a turn lane, and even on Blue Heron side, would you need to have a turn lane just because of the maybe possible activity that's coming from both sides?
Right, that's a very good question. Staff and the developer does anticipate an increase in the daily trips. What we do to ensure that it meets the threshold for Palmist County and FDOT is, we basically ask for a currency letter from the county and FDOT to ensure that, for example, one of the things we checked was that, you know, does this development create enough trips to require a right-hand turn lane from Blue Heron Boulevard? Because that would mean the D cell lane, it would be potentially drastically altering the site plan itself. But staff has received confirmation from Palmist County and also from FDOT that this current traffic pattern is acceptable for the amount of trips that are supposed to be generated.
And just, just for point, the reason why I bring that up, because it's close to that stop light in that area, so that's the reason for the concern, I have a concern there, for you do need a turn lane in that particular area. Okay.
And as a follow-up, even, I'm looking at the Avenue L, which is just to the, I guess it's to the right on this diagram, would be to the east side of the actual property, ingress and egress, exit, yes. I mean, we kind of seem, at least to me, logical that there'd be one, because how would you end up going westbound on Blue Heron without actually going down to Old Dixie to make a U-turn? And at least if there was an ingress and egress on to Avenue L, you could just, you know, exit out and then make a left westbound turn. It's probably going to be impossible if you were going to exit on this west side of this, this, this site plan and actually get into the left turn lane.
Let me, just for clarification, I'll point out the ingress and egress points here. So on Avenue L that you're just referring to, there is an ingress and egress point here.
Oh, it is?
So this, this is both in and out traffic.
Well, that's...
Also for delivery, there's a specific entrance just for deliveries, so they can actually access the rear of these buildings to drop off, and there's a loading and unloading area here, so that, that way there won't be any additional congestion on the north side of the parcel. So this is one option of ingress and egress. Additionally, there is an additional option on the north side here on Blue Heron Boulevard, and then adds an additional alternate, is this cross-axis agreement that can be executed after the fact, after the site plan's approved, which would allow traffic to enter Australian, and this is a lighted intersection here.
Right, well, I'm looking at this, it didn't exactly look like that from this. You know, I'm looking at this at, at home, I'm like, well, that's going to be pretty tough, just two entrances and two exits, especially at that corner. Now, which leads me to the next thing. At Avenue L, can you turn left and go westbound from Avenue L onto Blue Heron? Because I think that median strip prevents you from making a left turn.
No, you can. You can. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a westbound turn lane onto Avenue L.
No, no, no. If I was on the Avenue L, for instance, if I exited this property to the right, which is the east, and I go, if you go back to that...
Yeah, what, what there currently is, if you were heading west on Blue Heron Boulevard, there actually is a specific turn lane that goes down.
So there's a cut there.
Right, but now, if I wanted to go from that point where it says Avenue L and head westbound onto Blue Heron, that median isn't open.
Yes, it is.
You'd be forced to go right.
No, because you can make a turn, westbound on Blue Heron, you can make a turn onto Avenue L. So it's, there is a, there's a cut there.
It clearly looks like a median, if I'm not mistaken. I had kind of looked in on that. Am I correct?
This is a left turn only D cell lane off of Blue Heron Boulevard. I don't believe there's an option to actually go west on Blue Heron Boulevard here.
There's not.
So there would have to be, the alternates would be, actually go south on L and loop around Australian. You can flow through the site onto Australian this way.
Right.
Or you could actually go down to the Blue Heron Boulevard and Old Dixie intersection and do a U-turn to make that westbound.
So let me ask again. There is a barrier that prevents you from being on Avenue L and turn westbound onto Blue Heron? There is. There's a median, correct?
Yes.
So as it stands now, if you were to exit on Avenue L, you would have to go eastbound to Old Dixie and make a U-turn?
You, you could either go eastbound on Blue Heron Boulevard and make a U-turn on Old Dixie, or there's also an alternate route that may have to be as easily accessible, but you could go south on Avenue L and actually loop around and come back on Australian and get the light and then go west.
Well, well, be that the case, who would make that decision to possibly open up Avenue L? Is that a DOT decision, well, open up the option to actually turn onto West Blue Heron?
Blue Heron Boulevard is a state road. That's why it was additionally important for us to receive confirmation from FDOT that if there wasn't a D cell lane needed, that the traffic actually worked, and the trips didn't create any other intersection improvements or modifications for this site, or the exact reasons I understand.
Ms. Canuti?
If you're going westbound on Blue Heron, there's a, there's a turn lane that allows you to cross the eastbound Blue Heron to go to Avenue L.
Yes.
So there is no barrier there. So theoretically, somebody could come out to Blue Heron on Avenue L, and if there's no traffic, they can go west. They can go west on Blue Heron.
No, it's a split, it's a half a median type.
There is a little, can you see the landscape bond right here? So there's a landscape bond on Blue Heron Boulevard.
Yeah.
And this is actually a left turn only D cell lane.
Right.
So that splits off, so it's, it's left turn only to go south on Avenue L. So if you were heading north on Avenue L, there's really no immediate way to make this, this...
All right, okay, you're right. Okay.
And, and the opening of that, to modify that median, that would be DOT, correct?
Yes.
Will it come through, I mean, how would it work with, I mean, is that a...
If, well, there's multiple criteria that they'd look at. One is the fact that there are certain distance requirements between stoplights, for example. So let's say this was, it's not by any means, I don't want to get it, let's say it was a 20-story development that anticipated a massive amount of trips. So if it was that intensive development that actually required alterations of this intersection, they may look at altering the median, potentially adding a stoplight because of the amount of trips, but the current development generates a small enough amount of trips that they do not recommend any sort of median modification of that intersection.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? Just one, go ahead, Mr. Canuti.
When you say medical, are you, what kind of medical is it? Is it going to be like a laboratory, or is it going to be doctors' offices?
Doctors' offices.
It'll be primarily doctors' offices?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the cross-access shared driveway agreement, did I understand you correct that you have the agreement, but it'll be executed after the site plan is approved?
Yeah, I have approval, I have a letter from the property unit itself stating it's in agreement with the easement, and we have the easement growing up. We just wanted to get the site plan approved to make sure we're in the right location. The DOT letter is in the comparison form, I'll be...
Okay, all right, no other question. Ms. James?
I have a question. It sounds like additional signage may be needed in this area to prevent obstruction of traffic, traffic, you know, flow and jams and accidents. Jeff, what is the likelihood that they're going down the road?
So you're, you're talking specifically about traffic signage?
Right, like coming off of Avenue L, like having no U-turn sign there, going opposite direction and whatnot.
Okay.
Some of those things in place.
Yeah. When the site plan applications are submitted, each department is just looking at it, but that's definitely a big concern. What I can do is speak with our engineering division. If it was coming up Avenue L, that would be City Streets, our engineering division would work, and also with FDOT. Being that there could be an increase in traffic, we do anticipate a slight increase in traffic, we may alter some traffic patterns, we may be assigning.
Well, that happens, and there's a staff recommendation.
No, I think, I think that's kind of a, you know, behind the scenes, we're going to make the work. If the board wishes to add that to a motion, they definitely have people to do so, but we're going to make sure that our regulation function to the highest level possible.
No comments, Chair.
To the applicant, what's the timeframe on this? Well, I mean, once you get approval...
Once we get approval from planning, we plan to be in the next few months before City Council, which I believe is on the seventh, the next one. And we'd like to submit, as soon as we get council approval, we want to submit a building Yeah, we have a tenant right now that is interested in probably by 30 percent of the building itself. As soon as we get council approval, which opens at the beginning of August, we want to submit for a building permit, depending on the building permit. The buildout itself could take three to four months.
Part of the reason for getting to this point, this timeframe, is that the applicant was actually looking for a tenant for the building. It's a more popular trend now, instead of just building a shell and then finding an applicant, it's, you know, we have an applicant ready to move in, so then we'll go through the approval process, and then we'll start construction, so. How it's been presented to me is basically as soon as approvals are in place, the applicant's looking to really pull building permits and have a tenant move in.
Okay. How many spaces is that? Because I couldn't find that on here. Do you know?
Parking spaces? Total parking spaces is 78.
Okay, well, that seems sufficient, okay. And you said you're, you're looking to lease half of that building? Am I correct? You said you have one applicant, well, one tenant that's going to lease half of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just under half, 40, 45, 48 percent.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Yes, and you, the fact that the application was submitted in 2010, and there had been some changes, could you update the, either by letter or memo, to the staff, the amendments that are different, I mean, the changes that you've made, so that it's at least part of the record, the full record?
Yep, the applicant did update their scope of work, but what we can have them do prior to, before, prior to going to council, is easy enough just to have them make sure that there are no inconsistencies on the application. It'll only take a few minutes, so it's definitely something we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, concerns? Hearing none, is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Colton, seconded by Ms. Davis. Staff, if you will, please call the row.
Just, just a, a point, just a clarification. I'll just suggest that as part of the motion, just state the motion, state exactly what the approval, the site plan is actually proving.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation, to approve the site plan application for the construction or moving ahead with the medical center on the Blue Heron, southeast corner of Blue Heron Boulevard.
So move. Is there a second?
A second, but I would like you to add to your motion, if you don't mind, Mr. Colton, to up, for them to update their application, be consistent with what was presented.
And I will accept that friendly motion to update us with the changes that were made.
Update us?
Update us.
Because after we approve it today, we won't see it again.
Update the plans.
Update the plans.
To be consistent with what was presented.
Just for clarification, exactly, I mean, the update you guys are referring to, exactly what?
Well, he submitted the application in 2010. It was originally a retail and office center, now it's medical. So since it was submitted in 2010, there may be other changes.
I think the board is looking for is the motion as presented by Mr. Colton, and I think Ms. Davis is looking to amend that motion to add that prior to going to City Council, the applicant update the application to reflect any changes in the scope of work to show that in fact it is for medical and general office building.
So, Mr. Colton, you want to restate your motion?
I'll restate it.
Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that staff approve going forward with approval for the medical center on the southeast corner of Blue Heron Boulevard and Australian, and that the records reflect the changes with regards prior to going to City Council. that the records reflect the changes with regards prior to going to city council, that the retail update be, it be updated to medical center.
And office.
Medical office.
So move. If you will, I'll accept your second, Ms. Davis, cause it was a lot. And I don't wanna exclude the record of any further. So motion by Ms. DeColton, second by Ms. Davis, I'm sorry. Staff, can you call the robe?
Frederick McCoy?
Yes.
Eric Knutti?
Yes.
Shev Ruth?
Yes.
Julie Swiggen?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Ray Davis?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Any more bodies?
Thank you. Staff, are we, should we go to item C?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're awaiting for a staff member to arrive, I don't think he's present currently, I'll leave it up to discretion of the board, if you want to go back to the version of letter A, that is perfectly acceptable, or if you'd like to come to letter C, that's also my staff.
What's the consensus of the board? We can either hear section C now, or we can go back to section A, we are awaiting the chief and his presentation. C, okay, well, staff, if you're ready, site plan for the CRA.
Hi, Jeff Gang, Plankton Zoning Ministry. This application, case number SP 1307, the site plan application from the Riviera Beach Development Agency, CRA, developing community park and garden on two vacant parcels and a vacant portion of Avenue K right away. 2.70 acres located northwest of the intersection of 1st 10th Street and Avenue K. Here's a location map of both parcels and the right away. There is a slipper parcel to the west, the large parcel here, and then. Do you follow Avenue K straight north? This is actually a section of Avenue K right away, and the next slide shows it in a little greater detail. So both this first parcel, second parcel, and this portion of right away is all inspiration for the community park. Here's a Google Earth view, this is the section we're referring to, and rather colored pen over here. One more time, just to see it again. And this is a street view, looking northwest from West 10th Street. As you can see, it's vacant parcels, underutilized, and could be used for community park and garden. This is a site plan as submitted. It's difficult to delineate, but this portion is the Avenue K right away. This is the main parcel here, and then this is the additional slipper parcel. The CRA does currently have the two parcels, western east parcels currently under lease, and after the site is made through Plankton Zoning Board, goes to city council, what we do is, we can currently have basically an approval item for the use of the Avenue K right away, so we have those go back to back, so it's all congruent. Additionally, tonight, we have representatives from the CRA, and also Song Associates, who's acting as the agent for the CRA. At this time, I'd like to introduce Miss Anita Jenkins. Say hi.
Good evening, Avenue to Jenkins, the Director of Neighborhood Services for the CRA, and also representing the Community Development Corporation. I'd just like to point out that I have several of my Community Development Corporation and Community Garden Advisory Board members in the audience, as well as Mr. Tony Brown, the Executive Director of the CRA. And we're just very pleased to bring this project forward as part of our Riviera Beach Heights Implementation Plan. It's the first major infrastructure project in the neighborhood, and we have taken it to the community, we have talked with the stakeholders, and everybody is very excited about the project. So we hope that you will act favorably tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Ms. James?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry, who, someone called? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. James.
Okay, my question was, with the playground, is it going to be fenced in?
Um, we won't have a playground here, it's more of a passive park, and it's a community garden park for the entire, I'm sorry.
Like a sitting area?
Yes, and, you know, there'll be activity on the garden park and strolling pathways, but to answer your question, the entire site will be fenced.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, what, I usually go out to the site, and I didn't go this time, I'm sorry. What's around the community garden? Are there homes?
There are homes. This site is just east of Australian. On the north side of 10th, there are several churches, there is an ancillary building for Atkins Daycare. Just to the west of the site is a church, a community church, and just to the east of the site is a vacant parcel that's privately owned, and then there begin a number of homes going up the street. Across the street, there are a number of single-family homes. Also, to the west, in the block going west, there is a, I think, a fourplex, a two-story apartment building.
And from the picture, where, from Google Earth, where will you have the parking?
We will have space on-site for two parking spaces. One will be the handicap parking space, and then adjacent to that is a parcel for a place for the master gardener, who we expect to bring on board, to bring in a service truck, a little truck. We have negotiated, and we have not executed yet, but we've negotiated a shared parking arrangement with the church just to the west. So the whole idea is that this garden park will be a neighborhood amenity, and that neighbors will walk to the garden park. But we will have the use of the parking spaces, and there are approximately 20 to 25 striped parking spaces at the church.
And is there, is it large enough for a bus, like a school bus?
Probably not. If we were to have a school bus to come, and just parenthetically, we have reached out to West Riviera Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, Atkins Daycare, and several other daycares in the area to see if they were interested in partnership, and they're very excited about this. We'd have to make special arrangements, perhaps have an officer there for a bus to pull up and disperse the children. Atkins kids could walk there, Lincoln Elementary's children could walk to the site.
Additionally, if it was a situation where a daycare or a classroom did wish to visit the park, I think an option is just a temporary drop-off, the bus then goes off-site, relocates, and then at a certain pickup time, we pick up the students.
So this is actually going to be a working garden?
It will be a working garden, yes.
What are you planting?
What, will we plant?
Just curious.
Oh.
Flowers, vegetables, all the above.
Based on the season, the garden will have vegetables, you know, types of delicious things, based on the season and the weather. We will have some flowers, there'll be a children's garden, we'll have a butterfly garden, we're gonna do hydroponics. One innovative thing, and I'll leave it to the architect, architects to talk about it, but for the retention area, we did not want open water there. So there, they designed it so that we will have adequate drainage on-site, and then the sort of hydroponic or aquaponics will be growing on top of that. And then around the wall, the back wall to the north and to the west, will have structures so that you can do additional hydroponics. We're doing a raised bed garden, so there will be raised beds, and we have this unique watering system, a drip irrigation system that is so exciting. It will be computerized, so that you can have these little tentacles going into each box, so ostensibly, you can plant several different things within the box. We design them at different heights, so you'll have low boxes for the children, we'll have higher boxes, so if you're in a wheelchair or with a walker, you can walk on the walk path, and people with disabilities actually can access the beds and can participate in the garden.
Well, I think that sounds very exciting, I can't wait to see it.
Yes, sir.
And we're looking for volunteers.
Chair, Ms. Jenkins, who will be responsible for maintaining, is that up to the citizens or will you contract the person with, or maintain the body?
We will shortly be going out for request for qualifications for a certified master gardener, who will be like the project manager. We have a very active community garden advisory committee made up of volunteers, citizens, residents, et cetera, and one of whom is our volunteer coordinator. We already have volunteers lined up to participate in the garden, the residents, we have a number of programs that as citizens in the city, you'll be hearing about the programs very shortly, that will meet all age categories. We also, as an aspect of the garden, intend to hire, and this will be a program we're developing in conjunction with Workforce Alliance, several hard-to-employ, unemployed young people in the community to serve as sort of apprentice gardeners. We're hoping that they can learn a skill that could be transferred, give them some entrepreneurial training, so that part of the garden will be set aside for produce that we hope can become an economic engine, will be like a little garden incubator. And not to get ahead of our programming, we're looking forward to our public market at the marina ostensibly, so some of the produce that's grown here could be sold by these young entrepreneurs in the public market, lifting them out of poverty. Part of the program will also have produce available, you know, a couple of days a month where we'll donate boxes of groceries to some of the churches to give to the elderly and the disabled, we will be accepting SNAP and EBT benefits, we might have one or two days during the week when we sell some of the produce at a reduced cost. But basically, volunteers, you know, they work, they eat what they work for.
Wow, that's, that sounds pretty big. Well, you know, and what strikes me is this, and I was kinda thinking about this when I was looking through this, this application, this, and I think I heard Jeff said, you have the Avenue K right away, which is one parcel, then you have two parcels that's under lease.
Yes.
How does that, what's the arrangements with the lease, in the consideration?
This is one of the most exciting parts. The Herring family, which is the legacy family here in Riviera Beach, has donated the use of the big two parcels for lease for five years with an option to purchase at the grand price of $1 a year. So we already haven't executed lease. And as Mr. Gagman said, the license agreement with the city for the right away will be concurrent with the site plan approval going to the, the approved site plan going to the commission.
Well, okay, you have the option to buy it for five years, correct?
Yes, anytime during the five years, but we at least have the lease for five years. So one of my jobs is to find the money, create the money, earn the money to purchase the parcel. One thing I'd also like to mention, we have a very aggressive-
Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Jenkins, excuse me, because I'm trying to go somewhere, I don't want you to lose me.
I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, what if they withdraw, or, I mean-
If they withdraw, we have a lease, it's legally binding document.
Right, but after the five years that I'm, that I'm speaking of, if they, the five years come and go, and they choose to decide to do something else with that property, or, I mean, I, I don't wanna think that'd be the case, but-
We have the first right of refusal to purchase.
Okay. Ms. Davis, you had a question?
Did they set a price?
No, at that time, it would be based on a fair and reasonable appraised value.
And that's, that's, that's what I wanna understand, how, I mean, who, how, how would that be appraised, based on the improvements, cause you guys are gonna do a garden there, correct?
This is, you have wooden boxes, there, there's not a lot to the structures, you know, the plants, we're going to be harvesting the plants. So ostensibly, we could take the wiring system with us if we had to relocate, if we could not negotiate an agreement. And if you wanna look at this as a matter of depreciating the improvements over five years, I think we would have gotten the value out of what we would have invested in the property.
And approximately, just generally, what's the investment?
Well, the estimated cost to build a garden as it is presented is about $350,000.
Okay. Did I see someone else had a question?
I have a question.
Mr. Knutti?
So, so to clarify, the price has not been set, it'll be an appraised value, kinda highest and best used after five years?
Yes, we have not negotiated a sales price.
Okay, but it's a $1 lease per year-
Yes.
For the next five years?
Yes.
Okay. This, this I think is a really exciting project, and I guess one question I have, what's the timeframe for getting this developed?
If you all so kindly would approve this tonight, it would be on the next city council agenda, we would very, in quick order, release our bids for a contractor, and if all those things work in our favor, we would break ground mid-awest.
Okay, and how long will it take to construct?
We are estimating approximately 60 days.
60 days?
Yes.
Okay, so sometime within the third quarter, it'll be done?
Yes.
Okay. One, one resource that you're probably aware of, but you know, Mount's Botanical Gardens has a lot of volunteers, and a lot of them are master gardeners, that could be a resource that, that we could use for this.
Yes, we've already reached out to them, to the Palm Beach County Cooperative Extension, and several of the master gardeners have been volunteering on our advisory committee.
Okay, also, there's pockets of CRA-owned land within the city. If this is successful, are there plans to expand it into some other areas where the city already owns the property?
That is a possibility. This garden is being developed as a demonstration project. That means that we would not necessarily duplicate all of the elements on other gardens, but there will be elements that would be readily transferable to vacant parcels, and that is exactly corporate thinking, to beautify, to uplift other parcels within the CRA. the CRA, and hoping that it will be a model for the rest of the city.
Uh, thank you. No other questions.
Mr. Coaten, did you still have a comment?
Um, I had a couple of questions, but then you brought up the lease option. A couple of questions, who was financing the development of that? I think you may have answered that. And as far as the boxes with the vegetables, who are going to lease it over period of time to grow those vegetables? My bigger concern is when you brought up the lease option, lease with the option to purchase, from what I'm understanding correctly, if I'm wrong, that you will develop it, there isn't a price with a lease option. Usually in a lease option contract, there's a set price, and I have first right of refusal within that five-year period to either purchase it or walk away from it with possibly a down payment, I lose my down payment. But after you develop it over five years of spending $300,000, you then decide to purchase it at that appraised price at that time. How is this profitable or for the city or for the community with, with that in mind? Or am I wrong in the way that I'm thinking?
Well, I think that the social, economic, and health benefit will be the social profit or what we call the triple bottom line to the community. Uh, we're not looking to have a return on our investment in terms of dollars per se, but we think that there will be a great return. We'll have the use of the parcel for five years, no rent. So if you want to offset the construction costs by the fair market rent, if we wanted to impute a value for the, for the use of the lots, and probably for a parcel that size to use, you know, maybe $5,000 a month, $60,000 a year, $300,000 over five years, we're not paying rent. So that's a savings there. With the volunteer labor that we'll have, there will be a savings in terms of labor and maintenance. One other thing that I'd like to mention is that already we've been successful in attracting not only recognition for this proposed project. Last year, Mr. Brownlee and myself traveled to the United Arab Emirates to an international conference to, where we presented a proposal. We were selected as a finalist in a category where we were the only project from the United States, and we won an international sustainability award and about $17,000 in cash just for the proposal. Uh, when you receive your city newsletter tomorrow in the mail, it will have featured the community garden. We were, we came in second in a national contest that was handled by Troybill, where we should have won, we've gotten a few more votes, but we came in second and we won $3,000 in cash, and they gave us $1,000 in product, tools and implements, wheelbarrows, hand tools that they have already delivered. Uh, we have cultivated the partnership with Keep Palm Beach County Beautiful, the Solid Waste Authority, and we're continuing to look for additional partners for, for grant sources to help to offset expenses and costs. Uh, so I cannot stand here and tell you that we'll have a return in dollars on the $350,000, but I think it is well worth the investment of dollars with the return to the community in terms of health, the social benefit, the economic benefit, and the community building aspect of it. Mr. Brownlee?
I want to belabor this, Tony Brown, Executive Director, Riviera Beach CRA. I, I came up because there were several questions related to the financial requirements of this transaction, including the lease. Uh, the CRA, as, as you recall, several years ago, set aside a little under $3 million for improvements in Riviera Beach Heights. So the investment to the community, for the community garden and the pocket park, we've presented to the community, a linear park, and we're making an extensive investment in building sidewalks in Riviera Beach Heights, all of which will commence in the next 90 days. Uh, the idea of a community garden originated out of at least two community shirets with the residents of Riviera Beach Heights. And what I've learned through Ms. Jenkins and through the interests of the residents is that community gardens in urban areas is a way to sort of convert and make productive, unproductive lots in urban areas. Uh, Ms. Jenkins is being a little humble in how hard she and her committee has worked to bring the community garden to life. Uh, as she mentioned, this project received international recognition at the LiveCom Awards, and then was highlighted nationally by Troybill, which have in total, I believe, the project to date has generated over $20,000 in, in a variety of grants. Uh, the lease is a five-year lease. We were concerned about the significant investments we were making. Uh, the property is owned by the Herring family. Uh, I think they have been quite gracious. Uh, we are leasing the lot for a dollar a year. We are required to pay property taxes, which I think is less than $800 on this property. Uh, we do not have the first right of refusal. We have the first right of opportunity. So if, after the five-year lease, if they intend to sell the property and they have a buyer, then we have the right to match or beat that price, thus, this listed price in the lease.
Right, and my question leads from that. So is it based on the value now, the appraised value at 2013, the month of July, or is it based on the value after you guys have made improvements? Because if, you know, I don't, I would hate to see that it comes to the five-year mark. Well, where are we at now in the lease? Excuse me, let me ask you that first. Where are we at? Are we within year one or beyond year one?
We went within the first year of the lease. It was, it was approved and executed, I believe, less than 60 days ago, so we're in year one of the lease. Uh, the issue of value is, obviously, we would love to buy it based on what we think the value of that lot is today, not based on what the Herring's intended to do with it years ago. And, and I don't know, I think Riviera Beach Heights is, is such a high hodgepodge of zoning that, you know, unfortunately, you see a cluster of single-family homes. I think it would be their intent, they would value the lot as to based on how many residential units, multifamily units, they, they could put on the property, which I believe that may allow, because I'm always, I always struggle with the differences, I'm trying to be politically correct. I, I struggle with the fact that well-mannered homes, single-family homes, have to live in a neighborhood of absentee owners with multifamily properties that do not keep up their properties, that do not show the same level of homeownership as many of the residents, and particularly the residents along 10th Street. So we are quite excited about the commitment of the Community Garden Committee, the activism of our Community Development Corporation Board to really take, as you can see, a really significant piece of property, including, I would consider, right-of-way property owned by the city that was poorly kept, into making it one of what we hope, through our Community Development Corporation, to be the signature green space project for this neighborhood as one of several investments we plan to make in that neighborhood over the next 90 days.
I'm sorry if I confused you, but my question was, there's a lot there now, correct?
Yes.
And we're gonna, I mean, in all likelihood, i- if we approve it today and we go and get the construction started and you guys complete the lot, 2018 comes and for whatever reason the owner decides that he wants to go another route, and he offers you guys a price in, for instance, the CRA is not exactly in posture or position to want to purchase that property. Now, at that point, based on the improvements, is that going to be factored into the actual value, or will the improvements be not a part of the basis, and then that would be appraised?
I'm sorry, I didn't answer the question directly. The, the answer to your question, I don't know. Obviously, at that point, the seller's going to look to try to maximize on their return. Clearly, we'll be adding value to the property as a community garden, but I've been assured by Ms. Jenkins and those who are more experts that a lot of the way the boxing and the things work, that we'll be able to relocate a lot of the fixed assets that we put on the property. Uh, in the lease, we have negotiated that certain things would stay, like the fencing. We've negotiated that we would bring the property back to its original state, which is a vacant lot, but many of the products will move. One of the things, because of your concern, the initial drawing that they had, they wanted to build a bathroom, a fixed bathroom. There were two concerns I had in that regard. One was the safety issue of having a restroom structure and not knowing that it would have unintended consequences for the residents, being a, a very disruptive feature. And then secondly, the investment. And so we, we modified the plans to eliminate having a, a, a constructed restroom. But I think your concerns are appropriate. It is a major investment we make in five years. I think a big part of the improvements are going on the city right-of-way, uh, structure, and that the other things, we will allow us to relocate to another lot as we replicate the community garden if we lose site control. But I do, I don't know what the future value would be. Uh, we do hope that the value increase we desire...
Well, if you don't know that, let me ask you this, maybe. Uh, the owners, were they just not interested in actually selling the property?
That's correct.
They weren't?
They weren't. They, they were not interested in selling.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm, I'm thinking like this, and this is my thought. Well, how is it advantageous? How is it benefiting them? I mean, while the community garden is good, in 2013, 2018, I mean, as we know, property values are, are steadily on the, on the increase. So, you know, I, I, I'm kind of questionable about the lease arrangement. I mean, we have a dollar lease, that's really not much consideration there. Uh, 2018 comes, is the owner still going to be in that same mindset to continue this? Or are we get to 2018 and let's extend for another five years? And then, okay, now the whole plan is changing, they look to sell, and that's why I asked, well, are we going to factor in the improvements that's made by the CRA? Is that going to be taken in, and is that going to be a part of the basis? Now, it's going to seem like, well, we invested $350,000 into this property in 2013. Well, after we remove all of our personal items and whatever improvements we made, we couldn't remove $50,000 worth of improvements. So now is that going to be factored into the basis? You, and...
Your, your, your question, your query is appropriate, and I think we took all that into consideration, and, and in spite of that, my board, CRA board, approved the investment.
I, 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 so they, they approved the investment. How about the lease?
They approved the lease.
Well, see, my...
With the CRA.
And, and my thing is, if they approved the lease, what was the consideration? Was it contingent? Because, I mean, it's kind of hard to estimate what five years out will be, because if you approve the lease on an option to buy, it's like the CRA is a part of a lease that they have the first right, you said the first opportunity, am I correct?
We are, we are committed to this community. We are to make a first-class investment, and if in the end, the owner of that property has alternatives and, and will build, and will build some development that this community support, we will gladly relocate, hopefully that the value that they will create on that site, other than the community garden, will be value-added to this neighborhood, and that we would have considered that to be an accomplishment, and we will find some other darrell and collop, and we will replicate it, and if that owner finds value and can make that lot more productive, we will relocate again. I would consider that a success.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. You got any public comments on this item? Is there a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve case number SP 1307, a site plan application from Riviera Beach Community Development Agency to develop a community park and garden on two vacant parcels and a vacant portion of Avenue K right-of-way, totaling .7 acres located northwest of the intersection of West 10th Street and Avenue K, with staff recommendations.
Probably moved in second. Staff, will you call the rope?
Frederick Conroy?
Yes.
David Canooty?
Yes.
Sheriff Bruce?
Yes.
Julius Wiegum?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Brandon Fulton?
Yes.
Chairman reporting.
Thank you. Moving back to new business, item number six, letter eight, text amendment.
Good evening, Grand Site and Principal Planner of the City. This is the second application from Century, Century Security Systems LLC. The request, from the applicant is requesting a text change amendment to the city's code of ordinances, section 31 dash 547, which is our walls and fences, and the text may request us to permit electric fences within the limited industrial zoning district through a special permitting process. Little historical background, this all stems from a illegal wall that was erected at 1102 Australian Avenue, which was the Old Dominion site. Subsequently, it went back and forth through the, excuse me, the code enforcement hearing process, and it was, you know, determined that, you know, it had to be worked out and the electric fence was to be de-electrified and, you know, those kind of, basically, it's still within that process, and this is part of that process of them coming in and requesting this text change to be able to allow these types of fence in, in that particular zoning, which is the limited industrial zoning. The staff analysis, as you may know, staff originally was approached by our, directed by the city council to incorporate electric fences into the general industrial zoning districts, and that was done and approved by ordinance, and that ordinance was approved in around 2017. Now, basically, we're at the level, again, where we have been requesting the, the change again to the, the code of ordinances for, to allow electric fences in the limited industrial The recommendation by staff is that police, fire, and community development all recommend denial of the proposed text change amendment to the city's code of ordinances, section 31 dash 547, walls and fences, in order to promote and maintain the compatibility of the city zoning districts and to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Riviera Beach. The, just so you know, the, the police chief is also here tonight to answer any questions also, and we can actually go through the ordinance if you like, line by line, or I can just kind of summarize and explain what some of the changes are, however the board wishes to do, the ordinance language and stuff.
Um, and if it's okay with the board, it, since it was an applicant requested text change amendment, I would like to at least hear from the applicant issue.
No, we'll, we'll do that. This is still part of my presentation. I'm just doing the staff work, then I'm doing the language.
Okay.
And then after that, if you'd like to summarize.
Well, yeah, uh, um, you know, I'm not exactly interested in hearing, because I kind of went through this a few times, and, you know, it wasn't that long ago that we took it up, and we have to go through every single...
Well, no, I could just synopse it.
Yes, if you will, please.
Okay, basically, it's changing from the maximum height of what's permitted currently in industrial zoning, which is eight feet to 10 feet, and then it's basically allowing electric fences within the limited industrial zoning district under a process that currently doesn't exist in the city, which is a special permitting process. And, you know, and then there's specific requirements of that process. And, you know, and then there's specific requirements of that process that would have to be met in order to allow those electric fences within the zoning district, within that particular, which is the limited industrial zoning district.
Any questions? Ms. Davis?
When was the limited industrial zoning district ordinance?
Oh, the limited industrial zoning district began around since the 80s. Do you mean the electric fence, the original ones?
No, no, I just meant the limited industrial.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none.
Okay, the applicant is here tonight, the representative, Wayne Richards, I believe, has a request. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board, my name is Wayne Richards. I'm here with the few people. Sue Delgelo is here with me, Cindy Pizzella, and Mr. Whitman. We're asking for a continuance. We have suggested, we have listened to staff, we read staff's report, we've listened to the concerns of staff, and my good friends at Atkins daycare and the residents. As you already know, your ordinance allows electric fences today adjacent to residential communities. And it's allowed today. What our request has been is to allow it not only in general industrial, but all of industrial with certain safeguards. The bottom line is, with all the safeguards that are in place today, and the highly limited, the very limited process that we have proposed to you, our friends at the daycare and other individuals have expressed grave concerns. We have suggested to staff that we're going to leave tonight and come back. And when we come back, we're going to actually say that although you allow these fences adjacent residential today, if it's light industrial, we're going to suggest electric fences with or without safeguards. So we want to go back and modify what we have, what you have before you. And we came up with this just now. We spoke to Atkins daycare, and understandably, they've said, we can't give you, we can't give you the answer today. So we are requesting our first continuance of this matter. Without going into, without going into any detail, we're requesting a continuance to allow us to work through this modification. We're trying to accommodate the concerns that we have created. So that is our request.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Any questions for Mr. Richards? At least, there are no questions?
Okay, so you're withdrawing what you submitted and asking for a continuance to bring it back at a later date?
Yes, I prefer a second half, Mr. Canoe.
Okay.
The second half. We're making a formal request to continue our matter to a date in the future, and for the reasons we stated. And when we come back, I'm telling you, we're, the plan is not to request electric fences in light or limited industrial adjacent to residential. That's, we want to work on that. That's the intent. That's the plan, is to make it even far more limited. So we're asking for a continuance from this evening.
Any comments from staff regarding this?
Joe Gagnon, Plinze, and Mr. Turner. I'll say that board has heard you to make a decision to table an item, continue item to a later planning on a meeting date before making a motion recommending approval or denial. That's totally up to the board. However, I do feel that there has been a large public turnout, and there are multiple public comments. At this point, I don't know if it's to benefit of the board and the public in the motion tonight, as it is presented. So it's clear for the record how the board and the public feels about the language as it's currently presented. And then if the applicant wishes to rework the language to a later date, that's always an option. However, I feel that all the residents did come out, the patient sat through two of their items, just to voice their opinion. In my opinion, I would suggest that one can do so.
Ms. Brooks?
I would just like to make a motion to deny. That's my comment right now, just to deny the motion.
Just a point of order. Technically, you could make that motion now. Are you just making that as a statement, or is that an actual motion?
That's an actual motion.
Right, but, and this is a question, I mean, technically, if he's withdrawing it, I mean, then...
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, Mr. Richards.
What I would say is, for our clarity on the record, for this language as presented, the applicant can, sorry, Mr. Richards, has already stated that the duty was to withdraw this language. If the board wishes to hear public comments, they can do so. If the board wishes to, they can do so. There actually is a motion on the floor currently, so...
Okay, Ms. Brooks, if you can just postpone it for just a second. I want to hear from Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have not made a presentation on the merits of this matter, because we are not going forward on this matter. We do not wish for this to be heard as presented, and we're not presenting our case as presented. We came here and we have listened, and we have spoken to persons in the audience, and we are, not only are we willing to, but we're going to modify and take into account those concerns. And I will tell you that if, when, if and when we come back, we will not, it will not have language that would allow electric fences in limited or light industrial adjacent residential, although you allow it today next to residential in general. So once again, we are not presenting our case today. It is very appropriate and very common for a board and for staff, quite honestly, quite frankly, to allow a continuance. We're not going forward with this today. We're not going to present it.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Are there any other comments or questions for the chair? Ms. Jackson, excuse me.
Chair, I would just like to recommend that we do maybe open it up to comments from the audience, even though he's withdrawing the motion. I mean, he's withdrawing the request, and maybe there's some other feedback that we may be able to receive, or he may be able to hear that he has not already heard. So I would like to just hear and open it up to the residents, who may have to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Colton?
And this is maybe just a comment or concern of mine by reading over the paperwork. Based on why we're here today, because fence was erected, didn't the contractor who was erecting the fence know the ordinance prior to erecting the fence? That concerns me as far as if he did or didn't know, or just he wanted to erect the fence and then come after erecting the fence, knowing that it wasn't in the ordinance to erect such fence, and there's certain criteria that went along with it? And then come in front of board or in front of staff and say, okay, well, I erected it illegally. Now, it's my concern now, and it will be my concern if and when it does come back.
Not to delve deep into it, because I feel it's slightly off-topic, even though it's on topic still. Staff did have a conversation with the contractor prior to the work being started and completed. And there's actually multiple staff members here had face-to-face conversations with that contractor. So I would say that they were well aware, but I don't want to dwell on that.
Mr. Richards?
I too will not get into the details. I was not the counsel at the time. I have spoken to my client. I believe the veracity of my client. I spoke to the staff, and I sincerely believe that leading up to it, there was a thought by my client that they would get it approved. They mobilized their team, and yes, I do believe that prior to taking that first hold, they knew there was a problem. At that point, they mobilized, and they made a decision to move forward. But without, I think I would want to go much deeper.
And that's fine. That's fine.
We're asking to continue this matter so we can redo it, take into account what we've heard today.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? I'm actually going to go to public comments. Do we have any other comments?
I think, I think we'd all like to hear what the public comments are.
Juan Atkins, if you can cue up the clock, staff.
How much time do I have? Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board. I'm Juan Atkins. I reside at 1117 West 10th Street, Riviera Beach, Florida. And I just wanted to point out that Old Dominion has really been a good neighbor of ours. You know, we've always had a cordial relationship as we possess together, conducting business. There have been times that they've donated things to the school for our children. There have been times that they've seen me out in the yard slaving, and they brought me water. There have been times, you know, so, so, so I expect us to continue to be good neighbors, because, you know, we can all disagree without being disagreeable. But on this one particular issue, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we're opposed to the language that was presented and now is being withdrawn for future consideration. But I just wanted to kind of just mention that, you know, they were having issues with the, I think, you know, all of the general history rules going on, and they were trying to do things to protect their property and their investment, and any proven business owner would want to do that. But, you know, by kind of sort of circumventing and, you know, cutting channels, and, you know, they find themselves in a position where they've made a substantial investment in this wall and this electric fence, and, you know, where, you know, perhaps had they, you know, you know, done some other things, they wouldn't be in a position. So I just wanted to mention that there are many considerations that affect us, including our licenses, licensing agency, our health department. While they will not take a formal position publicly, you know, in speaking to some of those people, they have expressed concerns with having a child playground next to a fence that's electrified. So we've had some conversations with Old Dominion and others, as they have, in good faith, attempted to try to mitigate, you know, and satisfy us. But the bottom line is, we do not feel comfortable with a fence that will be next to a playground where our children will be playing. We took pictures so you can see, and if you would hold that up, we have young students who could reach up and touch that line. Now, the question is, you know, how safe it is, and they're saying, you know, it only posts very short intervals, and there's no health risk and all that sort of thing. But the bottom line is, it just doesn't look good. It doesn't convey positive community, public information, and we stand opposed to it as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, Paula, or Parker, excuse me, if I pronounced it wrong?
As a point of order, I'd also like to let you know that there was an email I received at 4:00, and it is a letter from Bradley G. Harper Esquire, and that was on behalf of Atkins daycare, and that we have up front.
No electric fence.
Can I speak, I have to wait for my...
Go ahead. State your name.
Atkins Martin, Natterston.
No, no.
I initially wanted to let you guys know that having up this fence up, I think is irresponsible, is careless, and it really says they don't care about the community, because there are other ways they can keep their property safe. I spoke with one of the attorneys for this, for the company, and I was told that the fence, the post is so light that it would only give a light buzz, and a person might say ouch, and it's nothing. But if it's that light, it wouldn't keep out a criminal anyway. Only person would hurt is a child, so... And I think their motion to withdraw it now and bring it back later, I think is a very coward move. I think that's their way of staying. We don't want to hear the public right now. We've got to just wait until no one else to hear, so we can change our voltage and then come back. So I don't think it should be allowed to change it and come back and try to reapply. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Art Bullock. Let's call me. Grandfather of a youngster at Atkins. My concern was to say that I'm not for the electrical fence, but what has been said tonight, I'm just going to read, I'll hold my comment, because I heard what Mr. Atkins said, I heard what council said, and I heard what some commissioners said, so I'm just holding my comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tiwana Atkins-Williams. I am the director of the building in question, 1144 West 10th Street. And I guess my major concern regarding the fence is our children. You see the pictures, my daughter Kennedy is actually the one standing there, and she's not the tallest child that we have in our care. Kennedy can easily jump and touch the fence if she likes. The other concern, we have smaller children, there's an area of the fence that butts up against the chain link, and children, our small children, can actually stick their hand through that fence. It can get stuck, and they're injured. The other concern that Mr. Atkins mentioned before is with our health department. We are not sure that if such a fence is erected near our playground, we may be in violation of the health department, and in essence, could cease to exist and wouldn't be able to serve the children in our community. We've been around since 1976. My parents, John and Betty Atkins, started Atkins at 1144. We expanded across the street. We've served thousands of children in our community. We've employed hundreds of our local residents. We do have a concern, I'm a resident of, I grew up in Riviera Beach, right on 10th Street, so I am very familiar with the area and the crime that we have in our area. It is my opinion that there are other avenues that should be explored other than an electric fence. Of course, this impacts us as a business directly, because this is a property right next to our property, but there are also other examples, and several other examples of schools and parks. There's a school right across the street from us that butts up against a light industrial zone, Lincoln Elementary School. There's a park that's right next door. So it's not just my concern about our business, but our community in whole. I think we should table and look at other ways in order to secure the property. Thank you.
You don't need to hear from the chief now, do you? He's just here to answer any questions you guys may have. It's from the public, kind of thing like that.
My name is Kennedy Williams. I would like to speak about the electric fence. I can touch the electric fence. There's many kids other than me that can just jump and touch the fence. There's small children that can climb this fence, that I've seen climb the fence. And I just want to say that if, please don't let them put the electric fence, it's a danger to me and all my parents. Thank you.
Biddy Ann Bowlett, or Bowlett, excuse me if I pronounced it. Is that?
Roll up.
Oh, excuse me.
Roll with up.
Betty Ann Bowlett, 1136 10th Street. I'm the Administrator for New Hope Baptist Church. And we have not been approached by council for it, and we agree to tabling this ordinance and speaking with Atkins and the council in regards to this. But we are against the electric fence. We have children that come to the church. We have activities with the children at the church. We have bounce houses, and as you guys know, bounce houses rise way above 10 feet sometimes, water slides. And when you mix water with electricity, that's a bad combination, very bad. So let's discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any comments from the board? Just comments, because actually, I see the chief. Chief, did you have something on this matter, even though the applicant is with you? Because, I mean, it's only fair that I ask. We kind of set aside this item, you know, two times to hear from our Honorable Chief Clarence Williams.
Mr. Chair, Board members, thank you very much. Clarence Williams, Police Chief. I think that the Community Development Staff has done an excellent job in encapsulating the position of not only the Police Department, but all the affected departments. As to the efforts to table, I don't have a position. I would defer to Community Development, that is the lead agency and driving agency for this within the city. I would simply remind the board, what is being sought here is an exception to our law. And when a party seeks an exception to existing law, to me, it should cause a pause and a great deal of reflection. The current state of our law serves our community. Making exceptions to that will water that down. One other comment, as I take my seat, I've heard that currently, our existing ordinance permits electric fences to abut residential properties. Yes, that's because the city of Riviera Beach is 10 by 10 square miles, and I may be giving it a half mile or so. And the way that our planning, our housing plan and development plan was merged, that's the result of it. But considering where to place electric fences in 2008, 10? 2009? Nine. Great deal of thought in this board. Also participated in that, was given to, restricting that to heavily residential area and lessening the impact. The further we expand this, the more opportunities there are for it to abut residential properties. Also from the police department's standpoint, who is going to monitor these fences? We already have an overtaxed city staff. I have no doubt that this company is probably going to be a reputable company. But if we do this, then we open the door for companies that want to install electric fences that may not be as reputable. Who monitors that? How often do we monitor that? Who pays for those kinds of things? From a governmental standpoint, it is a substantial impact, that will have a substantial impact on the delivery of governmental services. And I remind you that it is an exception that is being sought. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Board, if there's no other comments, Ms. Brooks, would you like to?
I'd like to just make one comment.
Mr. Knutti.
Yeah. You know, I have a whether we, whatever decision we make today, but I have a problem coming at it from a little different angle, and that is for us to, as a board and a city, to pass an ordinance to accommodate a situation that was created by essentially not following the rules. So we're kind of, they built, they put an electric fence in, and now we're going back around and saying, now, we're going to change our ordinance in order to accommodate that. So whether we, whatever our decision is today, I think that's going to be a problem anywhere down, down the road. So, no other comment.
Any other comments?
Sure.
Yes. Now, be mindful, there's always, there's still a motion on the floor, so.
Right. Just one quick comment, as far as if the board do decide or decide not to table it. Are we still tabling it for the presentation of an electric fence in the future? I mean, are we talking future electric fence, or?
Well, that's all in the motion. I mean, that's all in the motion, Mr. Colton. Whoever decides to make the motion will kind of make the stipulations on what they would like to hear in it. But if there's no other comments, there's a motion on the floor.
I have another comment.
Mr. Wiggum.
Mr. Chairman, when this came before us, what before, about this electric fence, as a retired educator, I was definitely against that. I don't want no children near no fence. There were some suggestions brought up during that meeting. Why add electric fence? Why not some cameras, or some other sort of security to protect the property? We brought out a lot of suggestions at that meeting. I don't know, I don't remember all of them. We thought about more security with the Riviera Beach Police Department, patrol around there. We discussed that, that there would be, that the chief was saying. There were a lot of things brought out. That's why I am surprised to see this back up before us again, because I want to tell you, I do not want an electric fence near a child. I don't care if it's 100 feet, 50 feet, but I do not want a fence near a child. They're going to have precautions. I understand. The last thing we had are pictures. When this fence was put up illegally, that we had a picture of a child from acting school standing near it. We saw a picture of that, and that concerned us. But now, I don't know if a secondary fence, before you get to the electric fence, would be efficient. But it's dangerous. And there are precautions that I heard tonight that are going to be taken. But there are still some avenues that can cause a child to wander over there, cause a child to get injured in some kind of way. At the last meeting that we had on this, the neighbors were notified about this. They were against that, too. It's something that can be worked out. I know it can be worked out for the security of the company. But what started it off was when the company, then a man come in and put up the fence, without the city knowing anything about it. That dropped the bombshell right there. And that bombshell is still there. So we need to work together to get something that could be for the safety of this company, you know, protecting their items and stuff. But we also need to think about the safety of the kids. Something to be done better than what I'm listening to tonight. So maybe the board has asked us suggestions, maybe they have asked us suggestions. But you look at those kids over there. I don't want to go to one of those kids' films. For being, going and wandering around that property. It could be after school. It don't have to be school time. It could be people running around there that are kids after school. That's what we got to look at. This is a 24-hour situation. Back to Madam Chair.
Mr. Chair, excuse me.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. It was the Madam Chair up there when I did it before.
I thought we were okay, Mr. Wiggum. And excuse me, board, I did overlook one of the comment cards. And if you can cue up the clock, I'm sorry about that. Marilyn Jones, my apologies again. I think it might have stuck to the back of the other one.
Thanks. My name is Marilyn Jones, and I am a grandparent of two children that are at Atkins Daycare. And I also work with families that are disabled. And some of the families that we work with, we try to integrate them in the community, and we don't isolate them from any daycare facility. And my fear and concern is that this fence was illegally installed without a permit. And that is a concern of mine, because as a responsible adult, I know when we did renovation, one of the first things you had to do is get a permit, and then you had to have the inspector to come out. And with those children out there playing on the playground, if the ball is kicked, they're running after it. If, we as adults, we have to be very cautious. If there was an electrical, electrical fencing all around this building, somebody would inadvertently touch it. And it's not just going to be a little shock. And that is my concern. We are looking at the health, safety, and welfare of our children. And it's unfair to them, because this company already knew that there was a daycare that was right in their back door. They didn't just move there. They have been there for years. And they should not have to risk their business and the safety of the children, because people want to keep their stuff safe. There are other means that I'm sure that they can use, and they can come up with, and to continue to table this, I don't think that that's fair. If this, they table once before, and now we're here again, why are we continuing to table it? Because some of the parents showed up? But we want to wait until we get all of the parents to show up to really let them know how displeased they are with the safety of their children. I don't think that it's fair to them or to anyone else to put an electric fence. We live in America. People should, they should, children should be free to run, jump, and play. It's right next to a church as well. I think that all of this should, this should be taken into consideration about the health and safety of our children. God forbid something that happened to my grandchildren while they are there to play, and they're not aware of the fence that's there. These are little kids. Right now, we have even the middle school kids that are there, and they are there to have fun. It's summertime. Not so to be cautious, because what are they going to come up with? Wait until, you know, smiling under? You know, they've already installed the electric fence without their approval. What's next? Let's take this into consideration. Thank you.
Mary Christie.
Good evening. My name is Mary Christie. I have four grandchildren at Atkins. I'm against the electric fence. I would like something done about it now, because sorry later will not solve the problem. I'm not considering only my grandchildren. I'm considering every child that's there. Please, take this in consideration for my grandchildren and everybody else's children and grandchildren. We don't need one to get hurt, or one to be dead, or for some to get dead. Don't wait till too late. Do it now.
Thank you kindly. You have something, Mr. Richards?
I just wish to reiterate our request. We are not going forward with what's before you. I have not given a presentation. Everyone has expressed heartfelt and genuine concerns. A lot of the concerns that I've heard, some of the concerns I've heard are because we don't have all of the information. We have not given it to you. The staff hasn't given it to you. You have not received a full presentation. And if there were a full presentation, I believe, some of the, a lot of the fears would not be here. But we are listening to the concerns, saying, not next to a daycare. And that's why we're saying we're striking that language. We're going to go back, speak to the church, speak to Atkins, and show them new verbiage. I'm not the attorney of the board, but I will tell you that this is the first request for this application. You saw us before, but we were required to pay another application fee of thousands of dollars, because we changed the proposed wording significantly. So this is the first time this matter is being heard. It's a new application, and we're changing it again. We're suggesting that we do not want to be allowed to do it next to a daycare. We're in agreement. So what's before you today is not our current request. I renew my request for a continuance, so we can go back, sit down in their offices, sit down in the church offices, and work with staff on wording that takes into account all of the words that I heard from Mr. Wiggum and everyone else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, actually, Mr. Richards, if you will.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I do kind of understand your concern about, you know, trying to work with those individuals. But at this point, I mean, we've heard this item. I mean, I don't really know what to say. I understand you didn't present, but I did have these folks to come here with the anticipation that you were going to present, or that someone from Sentry, or the applicant was going to present. So they were here to kind of address that and express their rebuttals. At this point, what do you propose? Because, I mean, I can't just not take action on it. We-
Well, I'll tell you, with respect, you can absolutely, you can, your board, your board has the authority to make a decision. If this matter were continued, we would suggest it be at a time certain. We'd be willing to have this board, say, come back at the very next meeting at a certain time, and you would not have to republish.
And I understand that would be, I guess, that would be a good idea, at least if hearing it from you. But I had a motion on the floor, and-
Which, I, for lack of a second, 30 minutes?
Actually, no. I actually tabled the issue, I tabled her motion, because it wasn't even appropriate. We were still actually in presentation, and it wasn't the appropriate time to actually hear a motion. That's why I told her to postpone it for me, because we were still within staff's motion. I mean, excuse me, within staff's presentation. Now, you know, in all fairness to these folks, you know, I just would have rathered that when we got here to the dais, it would have been done, then we wouldn't even have to hear the item. But, you know, being that, once it came up, I mean, it was kind of like, how do you unring the bell? So now we opened up the agenda on this item, so, you know.
It's really, it's really common, Mr. Chairman, to table a matter and go back and redo it.
Again, how do we unring the bell? We opened up the issue. There was a motion made. So now, how do I tell my colleague, and I can't. That's something for her to do. And, you know, just understand that once the, once the item was heard, and a motion was made, you know, she made a motion during staff's presentation. That was prior to you even getting up, Mr. Richards. And like, how do I undo that? I can't. And, you know, this is a public meeting, and again, these individuals came here with the expectations to rebut the presentation, or give some sort of comment on the presentation. So, you know, I would, that's my comment on it, and I would refer to my board for any other additional comments, and also be mindful that there's a motion on the floor. Do we have comments?
I have a question. Will we refer to our attorney? What is the question? Mr. Help us with the decision of what should we be doing? Move forward?
There's a motion on the board. There's the motion on the board. And Mr. Gangin advised correctly. It's at this board's discretion. Do you want to table it? Do you want to proceed on the motion? And then, so we just ask the item, but there's a motion forward. Should we do the address?
Can I make one comment also?
Ms. Brooks.
And I know, my comment was, the first time this was presented, and I was approaching, Mr. Richard, you talked to me, and I met with everyone, and I specifically asked the question. Did you all talk to the daycare? Are they in agreeance with this? And I was told, yes. Out of the blue, Mr. Atkins called me on another matter. As he's talking to me, I asked him the question. Are you aware that they're, you know, coming before us with electric fence? Are you in agreeance with that? Because I was told that you are in agreeance with that, and I couldn't believe it. And he told me, absolutely not. Then I get here, and you say again, oh, yeah, he said that he's in agreeance. Yes, Mr. Richards, that was told to me when we first approached. And I told, said at that time, while I spoke- at that time, well, I spoke to Mr. Atkins, and that's not the case. So, again, I'm going to restate my motion, unless there are any other comments, I'm going to come back and I'm going to make the motion again. I am going to make that motion again.
Any other comments? Back to the motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Excuse me. You state your motion, Ms. Brooks. It's been probably a half hour longer.
A motion that we deny the requests from, is it Sentry? The ordinance, the city co-ordinance text amendment request, section 31-547, the walls and electric fence, proposed amendment of permitting zoning district for electric fence use within the city to include the limited industrial zoning district.
It's been properly moved. Mr. Canuti, did you have a question?
No.
Is there a second? Here we go. Properly moved and second. Staff, call the roll, please.
Question?
Just a second. Ms. Jackson?
Yes. By denying this, do we deny them the opportunity to bring it back before this board? Or can they still come back to bring it back before the board?
Um, I certainly believe that they can reapply and go through the process again. Am I correct?
And by reapply, would that include another application B?
That's dying for a little plan. I guess ultimately, it would have to be, how much of the language are they changing? Because it was a total rewrite from the last language, and that is why we, oh, actually, I mean, there's more history than that to this. I guess honestly, it's probably an eternal decision that we'll have to make on if another application will have to be submitted for the rewrite of the language.
Are there any, what are the rules?
Okay, that's a great question. I don't think it's specifically defined, something that we have to make a determination on.
Jeff Gang, playing some consideration. Ultimately, if the submittal is drastic enough, as determined by the Community Development Director, then we require a new submittal in its entirety. If it is deemed a modification of what was previously submitted, then that would be an administrative decision, once again, whether or not any fees are due. That, that is based off of, it will be additional staff time, tribute language, there will be advertising fees involved, that would be on the burden of the city if there is no additional fees, so those are things that would be factored into the decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Canuti, did you have something? It was, any other comments? Uh, we're going to go back to roll call if there's not. I had a motion for Ms., by Ms. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Colton. Staff?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
No.
Renee James?
No.
Julius Wiggum? Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
We voted. We voted. Yes or no, against or right?
We voted for the motion.
Mr. Chairman. Point of order. Staff, did you record a vote for Mr. Wiggum?
Yes.
You did record a vote for him?
He said yes.
As a point of order, if I may, the motion on the floor is to deny, a vote of yes would be to deny, a vote of no would be not to deny.
Right. I, I'm sorry, I, I don't believe I heard that correctly. Mr. Wiggum, what was your vote? Can you please repeat your vote?
Are we voting far against this now?
The motion on the floor is to deny. And what was your vote? Deny the application, deny?
I'm saying, we are voting far against the applicant's request, right?
The motion was made by Ms. Brooks to deny the application.
Okay.
Okay, he said yes, and he's just a reason why I didn't vote. Speaking to the mic, probably everyone hears and it's recorded. I saw he said yes, I heard he said yes.
Okay.
As a, as a point of order, if this is one, I think there is potentially confusion amongst the entire board, so it would be, in my opinion, it would be best for everyone to restate the motion, to state what the yes vote will result in, state what the no vote will result in.
You know, I, I, I don't agree with that. You know, at this point, I think we're going to continue with roll call, just as we had, and I, and I, and I'm certain I heard him say it. And, and even understand this, and this is for the staff, as well as the, the members of the board and the public. I mean, at, at some point, we've gotten these agendas, so we should have known what, what came up, so when the motion was made, I mean, regardless of whether or not we agree with it, it is what it is. So, if you will, Mr. Velasquez, and if there's any repercussions, continue the roll call at Mr. Wiggum. We'll just take care of it then. Mr. Wiggum, can you restate your, and make sure you're speaking to the microphone for me?
I voted, uh, yes, before I voted no, now, right?
Well, what's your vote now?
He doesn't understand.
I'm still confused myself.
Okay. At this point, Ms. Brooks, will you please restate your motion?
My motion is to deny the city co-ordinance text amendment request, section 31-547, walls and fences, proposed amendment of permitting zoning district for electric fence use within the cities to include limited industrial. So, my motion is to deny that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Brooks.
A yes vote means that you are denying the application, or you're voting to deny it. A no vote means that you want it to go forward, that you're not voting to deny it.
We're voting to continue. So.
It's not that you want it to go forward of these.
We're not, that's not the motion.
It's not my motion.
I know that's not the motion, but the, the interpretation is what the no vote means.
Are we clear?
Well, just one, one point, because there may be some confusion. We're not voting to continue, we're voting on this amendment.
Exactly.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
So, so, we're, we're limiting this vote to this amendment.
Are there any comments? Any additional comments? Hearing your motion again, Ms. Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes. And please, you know, we're going to go to roll call, but if everyone can speak into the microphone, so it's, it's clear, at least for staff and also for the record. If you will, staff?
You sure, Brooks?
Yes.
Brian Colson?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Renee James?
No.
Marie Davis?
No.
Edulio Canuti?
Yes.
Frederick McCoy?
No.
Motion passes, four yes, three no.
Thank you. Going over to item seven, general discussion. There's no comment from the public. Any correspondence, Jeff?
Our staff has no correspondence.
If you would, any board comments on the general discussions? Hearing no board comments. Staff, you got any updates?
Updates? We are anticipating our next meeting on August 8th. We do not have been finalized, however, we do not anticipate a meeting on July 25th.
Okay. There's nothing else on the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
But, you should have another meeting.